I'm Councilman Andrew Palfrey and I'm one of the members of the Democracy Commission. Unfortunately, because we've got a visit to another council and one or two members who are unavailable, and a couple are ill, you stuck with me.
That's fine, that's okay. How many people were there on the way?
During the interrogation, one, me, and I've got three officers, Spencer, Carl and Jackie. They're taking notes and Spencer's doing the technical bit.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. I'll just give you a little bit of background. I've been chairing a Members' Commission for the last couple of years, which is a small all-party focus group, which has been just really looking at how the role of the councillor might change in the next five, 10 years, what we need to do to attract more people to become councillors. But that started to raise bigger questions about the role of the councillor's relationships with citizens, social media becoming so dominant in people's lives. So we decided to set up the Democracy Commission, which again is an all-party body and it has an independent chair, Dr Andrew Mycock from Huddersfield University. And I should apologise that he's not here as well, I understand he's at the moment in transit to London. Now, over the summer, we've held a number of engagement exercises around Kirklees and begun a programme of public evidence gathering, of which this is one. And as I mentioned, we've visited other councillors. And we're continuing to do that probably until the early part of next month and then we'll be getting together and sifting all the evidence that we've taken. So your contribution today is going to be particularly valuable in the areas that we know you've got expertise in. And so thank you very much indeed for giving up some of your time to help us out.
Absolutely. We're sitting in my studio with a couple of us too. We just think you've got some contact. This is now speaking. I come from, I'm from an officer's standpoint primarily, so I was stupidly dedicated to more authority than that in the improvement of the borough emergency and probably only knew the residents, all the 150 local authorities up and down the country. So I've worked quite a lot and Peter's much more of an expert on democracy and practice and has complex around the world, so it's a conversation which has been quite crucial to what we've done there. So I'll just give you a bit of background.
Right, thanks. Well, as part of our work so far, obviously the issue of devolution of power in decision-making to lower levels has been a regular theme. Based on your experiences there, what do you consider to be the issues and opportunities we need to be considering when making recommendations on how best to devolve power in decision-making down to our local areas?
Okay, so let's speak the speaking. One of the reasons why we, me and I, but then the others of us, got involved in local politics, which none of us had been before, I think it was that we knew localism was coming. And so we knew that there was suddenly this potential, we thought, for real power, if you like, to come down to our election in the parish town, that we're a large town. So, and I think my experience over the last six years have been, well, I'm largely disappointed in the fact that it's taken so long for that to really happen. And then that's been consistently undermined from above, particularly in our case with a very infamished district, which is very political and they could have held what has come down, that liquidation has come down, has been held at the district level. So where I'm going with this is that I think, well, the fundamental issue is the reality and realism that to get people involved and to get them to stay involved, to get people to become councillors and to engage at all, they have to believe that the training that they're putting in really leads to results. It's certainly obvious, isn't it, that it's, I think, that people put in a vast amount of voluntary time and then again and again that either one goes into the long grass, all these trumps from above, you get the credit quickly and you get the solutions. I think we've got a real problem in principle of, in that sense, that we may have even reached the point of the times we can enjoy bringing people in. Because if you're trying to get, you know, what we've put hours and hours of work into and done lots of really good grassroots experimentation, top people excited about, then it's taken away at those higher levels. So for me, it's all about finding ways in which people can really put time in, say what they want, and then getting them and receiving it all. If they can't get it, at least that's absolutely clear why they can't, they have to be that thorough.
Would you...
Sorry? Well, can I just go off a little bit on that? Because I observe this from both sides of the line. One of the interesting things that we've done is because we're independents, we advertise for councillors. And one of the myths that we've borne away here is that people don't want to stand as councillors. And actually, that hasn't been a problem. So in 2015, when we stood again, and again, once again, we put out an advert which perfectly said, "What can you do for food? We're not interested in how you've brought it." We had over 40 people who wanted to stand as councillors. We had to then form a little group who would then decide who would be councillors and themselves worked for Stanton, so that was a cross-section of people from across the town. And then we ran some exercises over the weekend. What that meant was that we were drawing from a much wider gene pool than the traditional parties, who really only select from our own party votes. And what I've heard is that turns up people with all sorts of skills and experiences. This is not, even though Peter and I might be, this is not a middle-class environment and we don't have exclusively middle-class councillors. But what we have got is people who want to stand and have one thing clearly in mind, not necessarily to help their party be more successful or to be re-elected, but to actually do something for our local community and neighbourhood. But to me, that's a fundamental shift in terms of how people speak and learn. So we need to go back, I love the thing, to think, how do people get to be councillors? You didn't want to hear that, did you?
Are you finding that you're getting people coming forward who are really just one-issue politicians, basically?
No, no. I think, no, that's not the problem. What we've attracted is people who care about food. I mean, food is geographically in the top corner of the district and the county and I think it has a bit of a reputation for qualityness and for independence. For speaking so mine. So in a way, you're simply placed to fill it up and there's a sense of foodiness, I think, which helps, which is not, which is brilliant, but it definitely helps. There's no, no, I don't think, I mean, there are people with expertise, I don't think that's what you have to think of, with particular areas of interest, it's sports and he runs the football club in front. But I don't think that he's been on track early at all, that his contacts drew the football club into being invaluable to us, because we've got contacts which don't seem able to, I mean, let's say, for a bit, which, you know, which others don't understand. Yeah, and the groups that selected the councillors, actually, much of the time, they're admitted back. And so we're fifty-fifty with the men, I guess we're... Everybody except me and my other councillor works in one form or another. They have this, they have a real kind of mixture of skills, as Peter said it. And I'd just liken it, I'd just be like him this morning for a talk I'm going to give next week, we're building it. It was a bit like throwing a box of fireworks onto a bonfire. It was all the way locked at once and there's a kind of, instead of leading up to the push send door, and you weren't sure what was going to happen, you certainly were probably going to break the air with windows, and you weren't actually sure what was all going to rain. And that is a fundamental shift from what was there before, when you had several, and I'm sorry to use these words, several people in the standing there after you, and had no fresh ideas. And so that innovation of new ideas that suddenly had a resurgence, but everybody across the town recognised it. Because we had ten councillors, like the seventeen, the first guy we elected in 2015. And then when we went for reelection in 2015, we were maybe six. I mean, nobody predicted that till we beat, you know, the older party in concern, the unions, the youth and so on. And what people appreciated was, we were just like them, you know, we weren't professional politicians.
You mentioned the traditional Bolshevism of the area. How much is local identity important to the people that you engage with?
Sorry, is it local or just identity? Um, I don't, I don't, I know I said about the Bolshevism. I'm not sure that that's a crucial factor, but I don't think it is. I think it's more likely the fact that, that we're one of them, and the other. I mean, you know, we've gotten rid of a lot of the, well, I can say the bit of crap that stands between between councillors and people. So one of the, the very first thing we did at the very first meeting was to get rid of all committees, to suspend the whole committee structure. So that then gave us time to have a look, because usually there's this, as Matthew's been saying, first item on the agenda, where you let the mayor and people to committees. Then people don't know what committees are, they don't know what their field are, and, you know, they probably don't know what the role of the mayor is. And so you're left to a terrible start in a normal council proceedings. Because, of course, people would be there for, and they know what to do and have a pulse of strength and that maybe it will happen. So we did that from the beginning and then we very quickly moved to get rid of a lot of the language that excludes people. We don't have a three-minute business where somebody speaks for three, because we let the public speak next to the agenda, writing what they want to speak about and that kind of thing. Which is very challenging in terms of chairing and managing meetings. But we think that, you know, it helps to break down that sort of thing. I've rambled a bit from you from what you asked me, but I think it's, you know, I think that's a lot of what we've tried to do is to, is to, you know, take away, try to make the council something which is part of the community. Although I understand that Kirklees is not a series of towns and communities anywhere, so that the group is usually even tapping to that.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, Kirklees was an artificially designed body in the 70s when it was put together. And we still have, some of our areas have still got town councils and parish councils, but the majority, the majority hasn't. And one of the things that we are looking at is to whether it would be well to recommend that those areas consider having town or parish councils.
Yeah. I've been to lots of committees in, from London Boroughs to counties to metropolitan districts, and I've never seen anything like we have here, which is incredibly informal, very easygoing. We get sometimes, you get quite large numbers of people going in. I mean, it's not unusual that we get 50 or 60 people to come to a council meeting. And what I found is that rather than restricting them from speaking, if we allow them to act as adults, they'll continue like adults. So, you know, they become part of the board. And what we did come further in the last few months, particularly councillors don't sit on a top term any longer, they sit cafe-style with their constituents. And the only way you can tell who are councillors is if people can raise an orange sheet of paper when they're ready to vote. And it's easier here because, you know, as we've often said, nobody's hiding anything wrong because of the nature of the services and the issues that we address. It's more difficult in a metropolitan district like yours, where there were some very serious and meaty issues to tackle, so I wouldn't say that that was a necessary work forward for everybody. But if you are actually thinking about some kind of neighbourhood proposals, and I've looked on neighbourhood proposals for Iddington, Tarahamlet, South Somerset when they did it. And that is a work forward because certainly you're actually asking people, "How do we address the issues in your neighbourhood?" So it's not necessarily as normal committees, which are never functional, it's turning it as a whole. What are the issues here that we need to address? And they might not be council issues, but are the issues that the local residents and people in that area need to take up themselves?
Well, that brings me on to the possible tensions or indeed opportunities that exist between representative and participatory democracy. I mean, your councillors are representing a block of the town, yet you say you get good attendances at council meetings where people clearly want to participate in the decision-making process. Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, it is. And because, you know, it's kind of, you can see my smile when I was describing that lovely that the very active meeting. And you're absolutely right, there is that tension. And we had a meeting about six weeks ago now, where he was, at the end of it, and I was far from happy because all that had rather pushed into way off the sort of representative, into the part of participative. There were a number of other factors at the time, but essentially, it was very clear to carry off. And as I said earlier, it takes a very different style of chair, a very different way of chair, because it clearly wants facilitating a meeting rather than chairing it. It's much easier for a chair, having that vote as a sort of former mayor, where you've got all the councillors and you're just listening to people very clearly, you know, there's a set of rules, that's a much easier thing to run than having people bouncing around all over the place. And I actually, I think we've built that up over the last five or six years, we've kind of built a respect from a core of people who will often come to meetings. And obviously, we've got the rules to fall back on. Somebody who's rushed to come from a monument to the end of a meeting, so you suspend the standing orders. And we haven't formally suspended the standing orders there. And we could use them in the sense of, you know, pulling it back to just councillors speaking and so on, if things were to happen. But that balance is a really crucial one, isn't it? And I think, for me, it doesn't depend on the issue, to be honest. Because what you need, by that way, to which seasons you have to have control in form, depending on the season. If you have a room full of people who are basically voting or going with an opinion based on a hunch, you know, that's a club of what you're doing, there's some issues. Cats, I'm trying to think of a better phrase, which doesn't sound too derogatory, but some of which are more complex. Well, I think we inevitably have to feel more like representative and decision-making leadership, because actually, there'll be a whole stack of information which people will need, the councillors will need to have got to, and the work they would need to have done before. And if you simply run a meeting in which everyone's bouncing with their ideas, you could easily go down, you know, get the same old jukebox, right? So for me, it's a careful mixture of how much you can put in that participation side. We've also run things which we call tunnels, which were based on the day of the Spanish political party circus, where we told if you use a single if you, like, say, a portmoneau in a room, and then ran three or four very catty, well, catty community meetings on these days, it can be these times, and they aimed at to bring in as many people who have interest in this case sport and in food and will live with them. It's not just that it's not in a council setting, so you can be in the spot of the football club, see who's had a drink afterwards and so on. And they were hugely successful in bringing in a much wider, or they are, they're still winning them. They bring in a much, much wider group of people, again, with a real expertise. And you get that expertise, that creates a recommendation. And then the council is basically obliged to accept those recommendations. And we still go through a process particularly of prioritising and budgeting. But it wouldn't work if the council then, as I said before, then trumped that, it might overrule it. But just remember that if you're talking about neighbourhoods, area committees, towns, parish and town councils, what people are really concerned about, I think what I've found is not the high-level stuff. It's like, you know, what's happening in my street, what's happening in my neighbourhood, what about the old shit, who's supposed to be cleaning the street? Why is there anybody supervising the kids over the road to go to school? What happened was there was a whole new set of criminals who were all punching from the set of boards and, you know, looking into sheds or whatever. That's the kind of thing that they want to get into. And that is normally excluded from most committee processes. Because, you know, you said, "Well, you've got readers to take care of, we don't want you to be talking about the individual things." That's what they want to talk about, and that's the DNA that makes up their community. So they're really key, and so that's what gets big round for us, is talking about their neighbours, their relatives, and not concern them on their day-to-day basis.
How do you...
Okay.
Sorry?
Got it, yeah.
How do you go about making sure that the public are fully informed and in a position to be able to make a meaningful contribution to the eventual decisions that are taken?
It's not the other way around. How do you get the councillors to be fully informed and then meaningful decisions? Why do we assume that people who are members of the public can't understand quite complex issues? I don't know. I'm not so sure. We obviously, we spend quite a lot of time putting stuff on Twitter, on Facebook, putting out a gen, everybody comes in, gets a gen, you know, reactants, it's flashed up on the screen behind us in terms of the main points. People pick up really quickly. Is it just them, susceptible?
Okay.
Is it...
Sorry, I'm making notes while I'm...
Yeah, that's right, that's right, it's a difficult process.
The engagement we've had with the public here has revealed to us that they think that councillors could do more to help strengthen their local communities. I was working on the basis that, I'm assuming you probably agree with that statement, what sort of things should we be looking to encourage our elected members to do to achieve that?
I'm sure you're right, because that definitely goes with earlier parts of conversations. So over all of our periods of independence of running through, we put around 10% of our budget into community organisations, supported by professional input on fundraising. So we have contracted in support with fundraising and with a number of staff who are community project officers, who are working in communities to help strengthen communities, to help have to work with organisations. And I don't know how this through is in terms of, it's often said that there's a lot of organisation and I haven't lived anywhere else for years, but we do seem to have a really buzzing voluntary sector. And for me, that's the place they're going through, I believe, if that is correct. And by that, I mean not just the larger organisations, putting a lot of time into and support to tiny groups of people, small groups of people who are openly taking tea to groups of elderly people on Sunday afternoon, to really small things like that. But that's what, that's the level to build community cohesion. And we're putting a lot of time and effort into that. Along with, we have a fairly unique position of resilience officer. Now, her role has been primarily around crime change and that sort of resilience and environmental things. But actually, that's spread into communities as well, to things like a share shop and a place you can borrow things for nothing and share things and it's community-free and so on. So those are things that have come from her work. Now, again, making, I'm moving away from what you're asking, but I think, I think that they, it's that building of a really cohesive and joined-up network community. And that is politics, to me, it's not, it's a party politics, but we don't have party politics. So what we're trying to do is to get people into positions and situations where they're talking about and texting on things that matter in their lives. And in that way, the councillors are involved in those things as well, as they're likely to be if they're going to events, if they're involved because it's their street, they will pick up those things. And to get to break down the barrier between councillors and people, which we've tried to do enough and try to break that, and I... We've, I don't think we're very good at this, to be honest, as individual councillors, partly because we're stuck in this three-tier system of parishes, districts and counties. So it's a kind of overlay of overlay of overlay, and that confuses the issue for everybody. So our stance has been that we don't necessarily want to be many social workers and advocates for individuals who've got a particular problem with one of the sources, who actually buy samples from officers, or rather, we've got lots of councillors, they say they're traditional lawyers, picking on a problem for their constituents, going to the officers, getting it sorted out, taking the message back, earning the keepoffs out of that. Well, it's a long-winded process and there are lots of bits of a chair that can be broken. But I'm not quite sure it really helps to improve services and to make sure that, it just makes that individual case better. So basically, we've tried to stay away from that and to play roles that Peter suggested. But that's sort of causing problems, to be honest. So I think we're a little bit distant sometimes from what is actually really happening in some streets and with some people. So it's kind of mixed messaging there really, in terms of how we're before this. And just one thing, we, like most councillors, have a planning committee. And one of the committees we've got with us was the planning committee. And what we have is a planning advisory group. And the difference between those two is that rather than people, the good people of the room coming to answer the town parish council and putting forward their whole case about, you know, the neighbour saw the window and everything, and feel that they have been consulted, they've done their bit, you know, and then realise or don't realise that actually, we don't have the power that district does. Instead, they make a planned decision, you know, which may not have nothing to do with what we recommended or not. We then, as I've said, we steer people to the discipline where they need to be. And we as a town take up the bigger issues, that's the time and effort into, again, working with people to understand what they want on the bigger, latter issues. So it's trying to get rid of that deception, I think, that actually councillors can do from this way. Now, our M D, I think everyone would study the paper saying, you know, "If you have any problems, use my surgery." It's like, what an insane thing to say, to me, it's like, what problems is he thinking of? Because he does copy the block discussions or the rent or the, you know, it's the wrong way around to be doing that. We should be empowering people to take their decisions to where they, to where the decision-makers are rather than using a limited resource and in that way. Just, I've just got to, I've got to point, this kind of stuff is humorous already. It's interesting now that we've kind of recognised that we don't, we don't pretend that we've made the planning decisions and everything. So what we do then is we actually fund advocates from the local community, whether it's lawyers or town experts, on big schemes, who then argue against the district council, and as you might imagine, they're not really like that. But that is quite popular in town, you know, we're pretty good... picked the problem, the issues of the residents on the ground, and we were translating that into a planning language and using it against where some of the planning decisions were. But I'm sure that's a kind of interesting way of torching this kind of problem.
It's interesting because I was having a conversation with a representative of one of our town councils yesterday evening, and she said that one of the things that frustrated them was whenever the planning committee here in Kirklees actually goes against a recommendation that they've made locally. They believed that if they recommended refusal, then it should automatically be refused by the planning committee here.
So every time I'm at them, there's no problem with your relationship, isn't there?
Yeah.
So, I've got to be honest, I mean, I spoke to hundreds of parish councils as well over last year because we won the council of the year. Most of them are, one of your products would be, most of them are fairly conservative, very adventurous, very traditional in the way that they do things. So if you were to go down that route and incorporate a new programme that you've got, there's a real training programme that needs to be undertaken, a development programme for individuals and for whole councils, certainly for earlier committees and neighbourhood committees, because you just can't make the link from wherever you are now into where you would want them to be. And not that nationally suggests that that's what the church, now, who are the National Association of Local Councillors, are, how do I put it, they're not the most assertive organisations.
We have, I mean, we have various experiments in devolving loyalty. And all we've managed to create are mini Kirklees councils in the areas and, you know.
Yeah, and that's, you know what we do that?
No.
Yeah, because, well, very good, because that's how people see themselves. It's a wonderful shift in how people's thinking. So, yeah, it's something that's not a bad. And also, it's probably not a bad, but it's got to be with some professional advice. So at these times, it's difficult, but having, you know, some professional officer who works exclusively for that community, even if it might be against the council, is really crucial. Do you, I don't know, I don't know if you have a voice, but I spent a lot of time many years ago, I went to, you know, they had a whole labour scheme. It did fall apart in the end because of infighting within the Labour Party, but it was quite an interesting experiment. The whole town divided into the Labour groups, the Labour offices, Labour officers. And for a while, it was extremely exciting. And they, even the, the Labour Party housing was hired off to be Labour, to make a deal with the water. But yeah, it, it, it was time to start, you know, your budgets, they cut back to 10%. I don't think that much, that much involvement to it.
No, no, no. And also, there's a reluctance for those with their hands on the levers of power in Kirklees to release any of that to enable it.
People don't climb to the top of the mountain, do they? So that's, and that's one of, if you don't win that vote, then this isn't going to work. Because you have to be absolutely willing to give a work out. And one of the things that we started out very early here was, we would start organisations, so we have a, so we've got Fair Group, which is about equality, food bank, furniture store, whatever. We started, we started immediately, you do it, you know, that is with the boot trustees, we really felt that you make your own decisions, which was fantastic. But there's a whole series of people that we set up. But basically, we said, we are, we're not responsible, how are you doing? It's up to you, get on with it. That's what needs to happen in this case. But as we saw it, the powers that be, you know, they've got a whole number of ulterior motives for a life. But I think that's why it's really interesting that you have this commission, that you're doing a bit of work of presumably a bit of reduction, somebody back down the line, that my perspective might be, democracy is not working well. And of course, you have to think about the four presidents and before Trump and before other things that happened. So, you know, you, I think it's a little pressing that it worked, but therefore, and hopefully, therefore, you also have the courage to, or where to make the decisions in the end, to go with some of the members. But surely, they will really involve the evolution of power, because it doesn't, that whole thing's pretty clear. But for me, going back to the very first, I would say, it's cheese and egg. If you don't, if you can't give real powers and real decision-making to the lower levels or anyone at all, then people will never get you. You don't attract new councillors, you don't attract people that need other things to do, right? No, because, because why would I get involved? So unless there's a genuine evolution of power, then it won't happen. That's a real disappointment with locals. Because suddenly, because that's so hate in the future.
What tensions exist between yourselves and district level? And in particular, the, obviously, you'll have elected members at district level who will cover your patch?
Interestingly, they, they also cover our patch in general in Lindetts. So we're really a couple of them, so the world, lots of others. We get to win our own character, but with the district itself, it's, we tried every technique. We tried humour, we tried aggression, we tried F B C, we tried being nice, rational, we tried being nice. And people can lead a free, pushing the brush knife of person that I am, purely to try and get on the district. None of which has worked. Now, only constructed concerns, so our policies are very different. Because with best decisions that bear loyalty from the bottom up, we don't believe in that at all. We've settled into a let's just ignore the search now, which is actually the best position we've ever been in. So. It's living, it's living from the things because they control grand. And we've had to recognise that some of that money, like new home bonus and the money that we thought would come to us, happens and never will, you know, but actually, yeah, we are massively constrained by the limitation of having this trip that they don't understand what we're trying to do, like that's a long term thing. That might be a danger for you, if you scale that up to Kirklees, whatever, if you have more public interest at the more local level, that, the nature of the relationship we did describe, you couldn't reproduce that, couldn't you?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So that's why you read the paper, we've got the power, right? And you genuinely want to judge. The tip side. You may be right in that.
I know, I was, I was, I was trying to work out a diplomatic way of responding to that, but in your mind that I'm surrounded by four officers and... Our engagement exercise also revealed that there's mixed views about communities here doing more for themselves. The, the, the old adage, well, that's why we have councillors. But clearly, the councillor's role is changing. And rather than just being here to exercise powers, it were more now enabling our communities to do more for themselves. But there is, it would appear, some sort of tension between those who think, well, that's why, that's why I barely counselled that, and those that are keen to participate themselves. Have you, did you ever experience that sort of tension? And if so, how do we get over it?
I'll start with, there's no detection, of course, that teams need to be able to take it and just start to get on that route. I don't think that most people realise that the traditional services of our state is over as we, as we go. And so there's, there's something that we've got to start saying and saying quite clearly, that it isn't coming back. Now, you're going to recover from your 40% reduction. You're never going to be able to run those fantastic services that you used to run a decade ago, two decades ago. And so people are going to learn the hard way, individuals out there on the street. But we, our local civic leaders, need to be getting that quite clear. It's not necessarily slicing in the wood, probably. But it's actually, you know, we are in this together. And that's a gentle step that by Cameron and Osborne. But somehow or other, we need to, we need to accept that we're going to have to help each other more than we've done in the past. So, so yes, there's still some resistance. And that's why we decided to really up our, again, we play with the multi-sector, third sector groups, and actually start working with them through that, providing training to make sure that they set up right and effective, finding resources. For small councils, we bring in a lot of money from luxury and resources and hundreds of thousands, because we take it seriously, we have them to make bids. And we work through those groups. If you did that, maybe you've got one group that's got a particular issue, you might have ten trustees, sixty volunteers, they spend the work, they say this is good. So that's been our route out into, you know, we need to make things happen together. And what we're looking at now is where are the gaps, and social services disappear even more. We started to take a, a kind of more, a clearer more in terms of, okay, okay, if that's happening, what do we do? Or how do we push other people to fund the board gaps? And it seems to me that that's, that's unique to each town in London as well. So you need to find what are the problems here, what are the issues? And what are we going to do about it? And actually, there may be nothing we can do, right? We should be saying that to people quite clearly, you know, because if they continue with our expectations, then the whole velocity is going to sell out, maybe badly. Yeah, I agree with all that. And both, the mayor last week in the local paper and both his column and basically Letter of Mel's in the paper last week, were actually, it's trying to just make it clear. And again, we've been consistently, well, we've always tried to support the planning, but we've always tried in a sense that we've definitely not been knocking, clearly we are a political party, so right from the beginning, we took the stance of never entering into the whole game of case for tact and we did, we did provide to the family against us. And in the same kind of way, we're doing this in a way which is, I think, is not, is not knocking the government. Because frankly, well, there may be differences, which include in powerlessness, that this is going to happen, that it won't be from government. So if we don't deliver ourselves, it won't happen. I think, he's right, it will take time for people to realise that. So there will still always be people who are saying, well, I pay the council tax, why are you doing it? And they're going to pay, you know, under quarter a year, or something at the parish level. And it's kind of like, well, you know, let's just go through this and kind of account what your money goes. One of the other things we've started doing this year is we've introduced, what is budgeting? It's all going to be, isn't it? 10% of our budget, something of that order. So, funny, this is for us in experience, but more significant than the lump of money that say the Scottish councils today. So quite significant input of time and human power into the bank part of budgeting. And for me, that's part of that educational process. Because down the line, I'd like all that to be way more exposed and transparent. It's transparent in a traditional sense now, but not in the sense that many people are engaged. But I'd like to have more meetings and more, you know, opportunity for people to understand those choices. Because I think then they'll kind of go, oh, yeah, no, I can see, if I'm only quid and fifty quid in, I can't possibly expect all this. So for us, it's that process that needs to break the stand. And it won't be, it won't be quick, because there'll be many people who will always stay with that, you know, I think, you know, you are paying taxes, you clean the streets. And you just, just, the final point of that for me is, so I think volunteers are going to be more important into the future. As you know, so the county council volunteering, so who, who wouldn't be bothered to get in touch with somebody in Torridge, which is an hour and a half away, in terms of volunteering for what they want to do in the very local level. So we're starting our own volunteer bureau for food, which is going to be quite sophisticated in those, having it be kind of electronic as well, as physical and being a new building. So that's kind of, it's really important to bring things back to that local level, because you suddenly start to get a much bigger input, because you're not having a wage you wear through large amounts of bureaucracy, you understand the problems, you know that a lot of the other people are involved. And then you can wrap your arms around them and say, well, why don't we do this then? Well, if you were, you probably wouldn't volunteer bureau across Kirklees. But actually, if you get it down to a local level, you can really start addressing proper issues. And that's, and that's funded, and that's being done in partnership with the two rotary clubs and alliance. So and again, like the earlier organisation, Fair Group, as I mentioned, the agents have that will become an independent body, whether it be a charity or a C I P, whatever, that's yet to be determined. But it will become something in two or three years, which is independent and independently funded. So it's not a, it's not something which the council needs to fund forever, and it's owned by and indebted by the community and therefore has that whole feeding back through the community of, again, castedes and members and volunteers and people's wives and friends and family.
It's funny that you, when you were mentioning about making sure that people appreciate the choices that are having to be made. Because at that moment, I was just writing down the word choices after, after putting flow of information. Is it, is it vital, in your opinion, that the information that comes from the council to the public, so they can appreciate the choices that you've got to make and put those decisions in some sort of context?
Yeah.
And how do you do that? How do you make sure that happens?
We just, actually, I think we've just recognised that we need to do a lot more on that, on that front. With contextual decision, which is why we have a little bit of a hash in last week's paper, because we, we need to start thinking about that. Because some things we're doing are totally unseen. A lot of what you described, what people like to see is, you know, they like to see something physical, a new set of seats or more flowers. So the other things that, you know, you do loads of that at Kirklees, doesn't get appreciated. So we need to start pushing that forward much more and telling a story. And that's really where social media is going to be so much more crucial than it has been in the past. Because I know some people are on it, but, you know, most figures would say somewhere around like 70% of people use a smartphone or a tablet. Well, if you can get to that, then you can start, you know, making things a little bit more exciting. I mean, because generally, people don't want to go there in the council. So it has to be regular, it has to be updated, it has to be, it has to be sexy. And we've just employed somebody who will, who will do that for us, we hope, because of, because of our background. Because I, I think that a fundamental part of local development is communication when getting the message across. And we're trapped in it normally, I mean, really trapped. And if you look at private sector recording and how they're dealing with it, how they sell goods nowadays, it's completely different from the leaflets and newspapers that we tended to go in, go for in previous years. So I think that is enormous. And if, if, all the things we've described, because I guess we're probably coming somewhere near the end, we're okay at this end. But the town council's budget, obviously, that's a million pounds a year for a population of nearly 30,000. So everything we described, and we're going to be talking about half of it, we had to talk about electric car club, the voluntary car scheme, crowdfunding through, the first people in the country in parish town council that do that, all for a million pounds. I mean, we do supplement our budget considerably by other bodies. But, you know, that's not a lot in the context of your overall budget, if you could recreate something, we could do just some of the things we've been talking about. And we don't get everything right. That's the other thing, we can't. We don't, we actually say, oh, we've fucked up here, yeah. Let's just let everybody know that it has not worked. So a lot of the, a lot of hiding, that was quite transparent. I was going to swear in there for your recording.
How have you managed to maintain a political free zone for so long?
Well, yeah, exactly. I mean, Mel, Melvin's values to me, and he's right. I mean, it's a different way of doing politics, I think. And it's not, it's not easy to get across. And I'll try for the next couple of minutes, or whatever, however, obviously. I mean, what we said at the beginning in twenty eleven was, this is how we will behave. This is how we will behave as a group of individuals working together. And this is how we will behave with you, the public. So as a group, we do way more listening, we won't get attached to ideas that are particularly, that are so attached to an idea that I can't listen to anybody else. We'll change our minds, we'll make mistakes. We do all those things which people do in their normal lives, and in their families and in their work. Because that's another of the things that are one of the main things. That we looked at the confrontational past politics of food. And just felt, what are you doing if it's taking energy? It's just, it's not interesting, it's not engaging, but it's really extracting from actually making decisions which are good for the people of food. So we, that's the route that we took. Now, the challenge of that, and in particular, this is a bigger challenge as you get higher up the electoral system, I think, is that it means you don't have a view on anything yet, you don't have a manifesto. Because you're going to find out what you should do from experts, and you're going to consult properly. So you don't know yet how you will vote as a group on plans for a new supermarket. So you don't have a manifesto that says we will vote against the new supermarket. Because you don't know. But for us, that was a much more honest approach. It's quite tricky, if I say to put a crock on the doorstep, because people say, what are you going to do about the new supermarket? And you go, I don't know. Which, so at an hour level, I think you can do that because you're saying, look, this is how we're going to do it. It gets a bit higher for the rest. But anyway, that's what we did. And then clearly, the good people of food bought that because, or, you know, understood that process. Because five years later, they, you know, it gave us much, much more of a mandate. Because it's much more difficult, obviously, from the second time, to come back and say, we're going to give you more of what we've given you. In a way, we have to, we have to have a track record. The first time, we could just say, that lot will crack, and we're going to do better. Which is quite relatively easy to sell, particularly in our case. I think it was the case. So, I mean, it'll be very interesting to see what happens in whatever it is, twenty nineteen, whether we are able to maintain that feeling. But I, I think there's a lot of support for what we've done in that. Although what either will operate, because of all that lot of things that Mel just mentioned, really, in terms of us being much more human and individuals and the way that we operate as council, prepared to, well, not just prepared to, but very open about the mistakes and the challenges and so on, and the debates and discussions we're having. And publicly are quite able to say, yes, we did spend twenty grand on that, and it was a waste of money. And here, you know, we got it wrong. Because that's how we, again, that's how we behave in a normal, in normal life.
It's quite interesting, when there's very little bickering, certainly publicly, you wouldn't, there's been an example in the last five years of public bickering. Even though, I was, the seventeen do stretch right across the whole political spectrum. And so we do have quite interesting discussions in private, in terms of where we're at. But because it's been, because there's no party to support, and because we do win, I think we're not that concerned about whether we win the next election. Well, you know, and because everybody really was selected on the basis of, what can I do for this area? Then you can usually overcome it. And most issues, to be honest, most, you get a ninety percent consensus. It's usually around little bits which are not that crucial, which seem to cause, cause a problem. So I am leader, actually, working in that, where I spend a lot of my time, and he's just kind of massaging little bits and pieces of egos. But actually, having observed lots of councils, it's very strange to see this group of independents working as perhaps the tightest group publicly. They will debate, but they will not actually be critical of one another or... I mean, I had votes against the rest of them on two or three occasions. I think we go, that's not held against, really. I think we debate better, actually, than certainly, you know, sometimes recently, we've had, we've had some really fiery and good debates, which have then, as Mel said, led to a, led to a conflict. And one of the ways of working, which we, which we have, is you then don't hold that against someone. One of the things that we found most obnoxious, if you like, about, about the way things were was that, you know, if I lose a vote, I'll wait until the next possible moment. And whether it's logical or not, I'll then, you know, stab both in the back who did something. And that, that's just not, we have to be able to move on and, and then, you know, just accept that's the way it is. And alcohol plays a big part in what we do.
Not in me, but one of the rules that we have with, with... Yeah, we, we, one of the things that we said right from the beginning is that this level of local government, and it has, it has, it's a long trip. Why, you know, why would I bother, what, you know, to, to, to continue to do this? Why would I put in, you know, Mel and I are putting in hours of work, particularly at the moment. You know, twenty hours a week of voluntary time. That has to be part of that, that's good fun as well. You think you're achieving something, or know you're achieving something. But also, some of it has to be good fun.
So I'm being more and more like Nigel Farag.
Oh, no.
What's the age profile of the council?
It'll be in their, I get the average as forty, forty, in their forties. I'm the oldest, and I'm sixty-six. We have a mayor who's twenty-one. And the youngest person now is, I mean, thirty-two, yeah, thirty-two, then you...
So quite a good range, in that sense, or better than I've seen elsewhere.
Do you consciously try and encourage younger people to get involved? As councillors, not just participating in what the council's doing?
Yes, we have quite a lot, yes, we do. And that, as Mel mentioned, when we put together a mix, we were looking for an age range, or the group, we got to do that, an age range, a gender range. And also, perhaps with many towns, perhaps, there are people who come to live in food, and people have always, and we look for a mix of those. We've got a pretty much a half, half, but, but yes, we do. And, and we feel that's really important. And you're right, it's also, a lot of the work we're doing is aimed at younger people. And one of the, one of the youngest ones, he probably is younger than me. So he's led, one of the panels that I mentioned, which is looking at the role of the arts and in food, which has taken him into quite a sort of high-profile position, has been great for him, but also puts, puts him out there as a young person. Of a lot of people who are involved in the music industry, so on, are younger. So that's, I'm sure that's helped to bring in people that perhaps I all know.
So you are consciously succession planning, really?
Yeah, not yet. Yeah, I picture, yeah, perhaps, I certainly want to be carrying on next time around the people. So, so yeah, we are beginning to think about that. And I do think, because there's a kind of pool of young people who are working in various third sector and voluntary groups in town, I think we might want to tap in a little bit more seriously before we run into the next election. Because I, I do think we need a few more twenty-year-olds. So yeah, beginning to think about that more seriously. Certainly over the next couple of years, I would hope that we would have some of that in place.
Well, I've just about covered all the ground that I wanted to get through. Is there any final piece of advice you'd want to give the Commission when we're considering whether we're going to be recommending serious devolution of powers to lower levels?
I, it's been fun talking to you. And I know that our experience is indifferent, so I hope that you take something from what you've said.
Yes, it's very valuable, something.
I think, I think it's about the role of the councillor. When I was in the I D A, we all thought some things about the role of the councillor. The role of the which. So it's really, that has got a fundamental change in how they see the world, the nature of their relationship with our local community, and how they interact with the organization. And how they're selected, I think, is kind of key. And that's just going to be so tricky for you. So, so don't do it.
No, no, don't do it. I think there's no choice, because I think, I think it's really dangerous. I mean, Brexit and, and, you know, the, the specter of Trump. To me, well, it's the growing cynicism and disillusionment about, about political parties. It's a real danger in our society, for me. And the fact that we need to reclaim politics, and you're in a position where you can play a part of that by, by getting people to, to realize that what they do is politics. It's not party politics, but it's politics. And the things in interest are politics, and there's a massive opportunity. And I'm just going to go back to what I did in the beginning. I think fantastically you're doing it. And I really look forward to seeing what comes out of it. I mean, of course, it's on a different level, some of it won't pertain exactly to us. But it'll be fascinating to see. I'm intending to have a look at some of the earlier admissions ones, which were recorded. I haven't had time yet, but I'd really like to. So thanks for doing it, and I think courageous or brilliant with the council, presumably, as Mel said, strapped some money, chose to spend some money on this, and good for you. And thank you, and thanks for asking it.
No, and thank you indeed for your time and for your views and advice. Where we go from here, as I mentioned at the start, we'll soon be wrapping up our evidence gathering sessions and putting together a draft report. Now, what we intend is that this process is going to be two ways. So everybody that's contributed to our deliberations, including yourselves, we'll be going back to with a form of draft report. A, so that we can make sure we've interpreted everything you've said to us properly. And B, just to get your feedback on any recommendations that we make, if you're, if you're happy to do that.
Great, yeah, please, I look forward to it.
But in the meantime, thank you very much indeed. And I'll let you get about your, your business.